All right, good evening. It is Thursday, November 18th, 2024, and I would like to call this meeting to order. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, we stand as one nation under God, with the promise of liberty, justice, and
The board met in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to review personnel and legal matters. A special education placement agreement and student discipline were also discussed. The meeting lasted about an hour. And now, we have some great students here tonight, so I will turn it over to Dr. Christian.
Thank you, Mrs. Petruno. I believe we're going to recognize our indoor track and field team first, followed by our high school swimming and diving team. I'd like to invite Coach Lewis. Is Coach Lewis here? I believe he is.
Not yet.
Not yet. Coach Jackson's here. Would you like me to have swimming go first?
Yeah.
So, we're gonna do swimming first. Both teams are very fast, I know that. Coach Kowaleski, and I believe we have Coach Stewart here.
Good evening. Whoa, sorry, this is nice. Good evening. My name is Kevin Kowaleski. I'm the head boys swim coach for the swim team. I'd like to start out by thanking Dr. Christian, the members of the school board, our principal, Dr. Bacconi, and our athletic director, Mr. Brett, for your continued support of our swim and dive program. As many of you know, it's not easy coaching in today's world. But knowing that we have the support of all of you allows us coaches to focus on what we do best, and that's making sure our student athletes are learning, having fun, and being competitive all at the same time. The boys swim and dive team had one of its most successful seasons to date this year. The boys ended the season with a 10-2 overall record, with a 4-1 league record, only losing to Upper Dublin by two points. The boys ended the regular season on a high note, scoring a league-high 473 points, 47 more points than second-place Upper Dublin at the Suburban One Liberty Division Championship Meet. This marks the first time the boys have won the championship meet since 2004. Scoring that many points proved to be a total-team effort, with 19 different boys scoring points for our team. The boys were led by senior captains Brennan Coyle and Alex Babka, and were able to bring home a combined 10 medals. Swimmers bringing home medals from the championship meet include our 200 medley relay of Wyatt, Brennan, Aiden, and Gavin won the race, and the 200 IM senior Alex Babka took third. Brennan Coyle won the 50 freestyle. Our 200 free relay placed third of Brennan Coyle, Eric Babka, Dryden Defoe, and Alex Babka. Our 500 freestylers placed second, Dryden Defoe. Wyatt McDevitt placed third in the 100 Backstroke, and Brennan Coyle won the 100 Breaststroke and broke his school record for the second time that year. Upon completion of the championship meet, the boys qualified in 13 different events with nine individuals, as well as all three relays for the District One Championship Meet. As a team, they finished 11th overall at the district meet, accumulating 92 team points. At the district meet, the boys were able to qualify for the PIAA state championship meet in the 200 medley, which finished 11th place, and the 200 freestyle relay, which finished 9th place in the district. Also qualifying for the state championship meet was senior Brennan Coyle in the 100 Butterfly, placing third, and the 100 Breaststroke, where he finished second at the meet. At the state championship meet, the boys really shined brightest, finishing with the 14th-most team points. The boys started off the meet with a 10th-place overall finish in the 200 medley relay and a 17th-place finish in the 200 freestyle relay. The highlight of the season, however, was senior captain Brennan Coyle posting some amazingly fast swims, putting him in the conversation as one of the fastest swimmers in the state. Now, my mom's not gonna like this, but in my opinion Brennan is by far the best swimmer that PW has ever seen. My mom doesn't like that because my brother's a state champion. It's a long story, but she wasn't happy when I made comments in that regard to her. Brennan was able to rewrite the record book this season, breaking three school records in the 200 individual medley, the 100 butterfly, and the 100 breaststroke. He also finished with two silver medals at the state championship meet in the 100 Breaststroke and 100 Butterfly, breaking both school records. Brennan has committed to continue his academic and athletic career at Loyola University in Maryland, where he joins three former PW swim alums. This is undoubtedly a season that I will remember for a long time, and something that I'm very, very proud of as their coach. At this time, I would like to individually recognize the members of the boys swim and dive team, starting by seniors and working our way down to the freshmen. First off, we have seniors Alex Babka and Brennan Coyle. Juniors Dryden Defoe and Aiden Smith, Wyatt McDevitt, Jed Aldifer. Sophomores Gavin Kriebold and John Carr, and freshman Eric Babka and Austin Aldifer.
So I'll just jump in here and also express my thanks to Dr. Christian, the school board, and our high school principal, Dr. Bacconi, and our high school staff for all the help and support that we get throughout the years. We certainly can't, as coaches, do what we do without that, and it is super appreciative. The diving team this year. So diving team was 19, 2, and 1 this season. For the three divers that we're going to recognize this evening, in their last three years, they were 58, 10, and 2, and 70, 12, and 2 since 2020. At the SOL champs, the team dominated the Suburban One diving championship this season, taking five of six medals. PW swept the gold this season, and the boys team has swept the medals in the past two seasons. Today, we have three student athletes who we would like to recognize for their achievements in the sport of diving. First is Riley Kiernan. She was 5-0 this season in the meets that she participated in. She was first at the Suburban One League Diving Championship, 15th at the District One Diving Championship, and has received a first-team All-League certificate. Riley Kiernan. And while she's going around, I'll just give the accolades to the two gentlemen that are with us this evening. They've already gone around to shake hands with the swimmers, so they don't need to do that again. The first is Austin Aldifer. He was second at the Suburban One League Diving Championship, 7th at District One Diving Championships. He is the third male diver in the history of Plymouth White Marsh to qualify for the state meet. 18th place is what he took at the state meet, and he has garnered the second-team All-League and All-District One certificates. Austin Aldifer. It's very unusual to have a brother duo, but we actually have a brother duo. So Julian Aldifer, Austin's older brother, was 7-2 in regular season. He was first at the Suburban One League Diving Championship, fourth at the District One Diving Championship. He is the second PW male diver in PW history. By the way, our first was last season. Second in history to qualify for the state meet. He took 20th at the state meet. He was given first-team All-League honors and All-District One honors as well. Julian Aldifer.
If you guys can come forward for a photo, that'd be great. Coaches and athletes, please. Congratulations. Next, we'll have our indoor track and field team, Coach Jackson, and Coach Lewis.
Good evening to you all. I would like to first thank the board, Dr. Bacconi, Athletic Director RJ Brettz, and the PW, the Plymouth White Marsh High School faculty and staff for their unwavering support of our track and field program. It is with great pleasure that I stand before you guys today to honor an exceptional individual, Ciara C.C. Frederick, for her remarkable achievements in winter track and field. Ciara is the perfect example of small but mighty. Ciara exemplifies the true spirit of a student athlete, blending elite athletic abilities with scholastic dedication. She possesses an innate ability to inspire and elevate those around her, setting a standard of excellence that motivates her peers to strive for their personal best. This season, Ciara has not only excelled, but has also made her mark on the competitive stage. At the Pennsylvania State Indoor Track and Field Championship, she secured a commendable 7th-place finish in the girls' long jump. Her noteworthy speed in the 60-meter dash led her to qualify for both the state and national levels, clocking an impressive season-best time of 7.93 seconds. Beyond individual events, Ciara has been an integral part of our promising team, contributing to the school's record-breaking performance in the girls' indoor 4x200-meter relay at the 2024 Nike Indoor Nationals. Her tenacity and team spirit are direct reflections of her character, which helped her team reach such a big accomplishment. Although C.C. has not yet decided which university she will continue her athletic career at, one thing is abundantly clear: wherever she chooses to go, her impact will be profound. She is not just a talented athlete, she is a force to reckon with, and any program will be privileged to have her. On behalf of all those gathered here and the countless others she has inspired, I extend her heartfelt congratulations to Ciara C.C. Frederick. We are all incredibly proud of you for your accomplishments and look forward to watching your continued success.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Coach Clarence Lewis, and I'm the head track and field coach of Plymouth White Marsh, as we have at this present moment. And I would like to thank the board, and also Dr. Bacconi and Mr. Ralph Brettz, our illustrious A.D. And I'll talk a little bit about Daniel Jewes. Daniel came to me three years ago, and he's always inspired to be great, and he settles with nothing. He works hard, he's attentive, and at the present time, I wanted to talk about his accomplishments. His accomplishments, as follows. He finished 12th at Nike Nationals, which is the first big national track and field meet in New York City that he's actually competed in. He's also, at this present time, he's jumped 22, 8, and finished 12th in our state championships. He's...
Second! 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 I'm saying 12th, second! All right, see? Thank you. He's number two. At this present time, he's number, I want to say, fourth right now in the long jump outside. He also has run on our record-breaking 4x2 during the indoor season, and he's anchored that. I can't, I want him to go higher, and I can't even express how much work he's putting into that. He actually has a strong track meet coming up tomorrow, where he has to jump, most of the time he runs maybe four events. He's often run five events without even blinking an eye, and he's always top on our team. So, I don't know much, I'm not a progressive person to write a lot, to talk about his accolades, but at this present time, we had a photo shoot today, and that's why I'm late. So, therefore, he's here, and I want to thank you, Daniel, and continue success, man. Please.
Congratulations to all of our student athletes. You are more than welcome to stay for the board business meeting, but I am suddenly aware there's a big track meet tomorrow, so if you have homework, or you just don't want to stay for the meeting, we certainly understand if you'd like to leave. But thank you, parents and guardians, and thank you to our student athletes.
All right, we will continue with the meeting this evening. This is a motion to approve minutes as presented in items 4B through 4G. May I have a second? Chris, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion to approve financial reports as presented in items 5B through 5M for March 2024. May I have a second? Rashida, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion to approve the March 2024 treasurer's report. May, sorry, that's the wrong one here. May I have a second? Rick, any questions or comments? All in favor? Great. And now, is there any public comment on any items on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, I will turn it over to Dr. Christian for his superintendent's report.
Thank you. Items 8A and 8B and 8C, board action is requested for the recommended personnel changes. Appointments for promotion and employment or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification, documentation, and state mandated requirements.
May I have a second? Gail, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And now, I will turn it over to our student representatives.
Okay. Hello, good evening, Dr. Christian, school board members, and community. Thank you again for continuously allowing us the opportunity to provide the monthly school student report. News from Contra Hocken Elementary. For the CE Pack Party on Friday, March 15th, CE students learned about being inspired in a choose creativity activity, where they made bookmarks and pack bracelets to inspire creativity and unity. CE collected 500 pounds of clean plastic in partnership with the Kiwanis Club, and we will be receiving a donated bench tomorrow, April 19th, that is made out of the recycled plastic. Thank you to CE parent Mrs. Tanya Sivarelli for partnering the 3rd grade Helping Hands with the Kiwanis Club. Also, many thanks to Mrs. Baker and Mrs. Cosgrave, who let these young volunteers to engage in community service. During the month of April and continuing into May, 3rd grade students will collect donations of gently-used children's clothing and items to donate to Cradles to Crayons. Thank you to Mrs. Campbell and Mrs. Donovan for continuing this tradition of giving in a safe way for our students. Starting on April 16th, CE began running its 2nd and 3rd grade after-school sports club, led by Mistress Steve Groam and other CE teachers. This after-school activity is made possible by the grant CE received from the Morgan Stanley Foundation.
Onto White Marsh Elementary. White Marsh participated in the Rock Your Socks Initiative on March 21st, where their students and staff donned their most fond, colorful, and mismatched socks on this day to celebrate differences and raise awareness for Down Syndrome. The campaign is held on March 21st because people with Down Syndrome have three copies of their 21st chromosome. The PTO held its regular monthly meeting to discuss previous and upcoming fundraisers and events. One of these events, the White Marsh Carnival, which is a wonderful school-community gathering, will be held on Thursday, May 23rd. Our PTO and entire school community look forward to this carnival, as it has been one of the most popular annual events in the past years. They also look forward to seeing everyone there for some fun in the sun.
For Ridge Park, throughout the month of March, Ridge Park recognized and learned about influential women in history as part of their Women's History Month commemoration. Cindy O., the music teacher, and Jen Fitzgerald, an art teacher, designed a variety of activities for Music in Our Schools and Youth Art Month. We enjoyed themed days, and students participated in a variety of related activities throughout the day. Once again, Mrs. O. did an excellent job putting together another choral concert for families to enjoy, seeing their children in action. 2nd graders performed at CES on the morning of March 7th. Students wore their RFP class t-shirts kindly provided by the RFP PTO.
Just one thing from Plymouth Elementary. Their Spirit Team is currently holding another clothing drive from April 1st through April 19th, that's tomorrow. They are currently asking for gently-used clothing to donate to Cradles to Crayons.
News from Colonial Elementary. CES sent six teams to the 2024 Reading Olympics, which was held on March 20th at Hatboro Horsham High School. Seventy students participated, three teams earned the highest honors of a blue ribbon, while the other three teams earned an honorable red ribbon. It was a great night for Colonial Elementary School. The Spring Book Fair was held April 5th through April 18th. CES 4th grade students are finishing up their time in the web program as well. CES has once again wrapped up the Math Fact Challenge. The competition began in October as motivation for students to practice their multiplication facts. The students enjoyed seeing who the winning classes were each week and the class averages of the next competition. For Colonial Middle School, CMS/PW TSA won a grant from Millersville University through their Farm in the Classroom competition. The purpose of the grant is to provide funds for the students to build an aquaponics system here at CMS to be integrated into future educational programs that align with the recently-adopted P.A. Steels academic standards. The hooked-on aquaponics team traveled to Millersville University on April 12th to accept their award. The CMS Jazz Band completed a successful season, winning Best Trumpet and Best Trombone Section Awards, along with multiple solo awards won by Weston Fittipaldi. 10 7th and 8th graders participated in the PMEA Junior High Song Fest at Sandy Run Middle School. 8th grader Brian Flanagan auditioned for and won the opportunity to sing a solo. 10 6th graders were also selected to participate in the special event that culminated in an excellent concert. On Saturday, April 13th, CMS chorus members sang the National Anthem at the Philadelphia Phillies game. 6th grade students participated in the cast and crew of The Music Man, are working hard to get ready for Oakley Night, May 3rd at 7:30 p.m. in the CMS auditorium. Additional dates are Saturday, May 4th at 3:00 and 7:30. The Kindness Club, which meets during the activity period at CMS, recently hosted a gently-used book drive and collected 272 gently-used children's books for Cradles to Crayons. On April 11th, New York Times bestselling author Jennifer Nielsen visited CMS to speak to students about writing, her creative process, and her books. Ms. Nielsen led workshops with students interested in creative writing to talk about a variety of topics. Thanks to Mrs. Carpenter for making it happen.
Onto PW. PW's Odyssey the Mine team placed second at its state competition, advancing to the World's Competition in May. Congrats and good luck to everyone involved. PW's Mini-Thon Event is happening tomorrow. This event raises thousands of dollars to fight childhood cancer. Have fun to everyone attending. The PW Chorus performed their spring concert on April 9th. The PW Orchestra played in their spring concert on April 16th, and the PW Band will be performing their spring concert April 23rd. Last Friday, PW held the Distinguished Graduates Organization Ceremony. There were three distinguished alumni that were honored. To start with, Mrs. Sue Moore, president of the CSD School Board, was honored for her service before she stepped down from her role after 22 years. Also, Mr. Dean Eisenberger was honored for his service to CSD. He has had many roles before, including work with the police, founding the L&amp;E Mobile Computer and Mounds Company, serving on the Plymouth Township Police Organization, serving as the Vice President of the Montco Fraternal Order of Police, and instructing at the Montco Police Academy. Last but not least, Mr. Brian Rosenfeld was recognized for his contributions towards film and media. Through his work for NFL Films, the NFL's production company, he has won seven Emmys. This is the conclusion of our April 18th, 2024 student report. Thank you all for your time, and we're looking forward to the rest of this year.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And now, we'll move on to new business. Rick?
Motion to approve and adopt the 2425 proposed final budget as presented. The Finance Committee reviewed the 2425 final proposed budget and recommends the adoption of the budget. The PDE 2028 budget documents attached will be available for public review in the District Business Office on the District website. The 2425 proposed final budget totals $158,174,696, which is an increase of $7,21,496, or 4.65% over the 2324 spending plan. The proposed final budget includes a real estate tax of $25.678, an increase of .658, or 2.63%. The new real estate tax equates to an additional $65.78 per year for each $100,000 of taxable assessed value, or an increase of $101.19 on the district's median assessed value of a homestead property of $153,780. The final budget will be considered at the June 10th, 2024 board meeting.
May I have a second, please? Jeremy, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Gail?
This is a motion to approve the adoption of Board Policy 324 Personnel Files on a first-read basis. This is a new policy and is characterized as a legal liability.
May I have a second, please? Sharon, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the revisions to the board policies outlined below on a second-read basis. Policy 318, penalties for tardiness, and Policy 319, outside activities.
May I have a second? Chris, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion to appoint Fox Rothschild as Solicitor for the Colonial School District for the time period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, based upon the following: An annualized retainer of $22,000 per year, a base hourly rate of $205, alternative rates in accordance with this engagement letter, rates as established by the insurance carrier, where Fox Rothschild is an approved provider, and motion to approve HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the District and Fox Rothschild as the result of Fox Rothschild handling cases that involve protected health information on behalf of the District. And that is a motion. May I have a second? Rick, any questions or comments? All in favor? Great, thank you. Sharon?
This is a motion to approve the contract with MCIU to provide VHS program services for the 2425 school year.
May I have a second, please? Gail, any questions or comments? All in favor? Great, thank you. Chris?
Motion to approve a release and placement agreement in lieu of FAP. Due to student confidentiality issues, this agreement was reviewed in executive session.
May I have a second, please? Will, any questions or comments? All in favor? Great, thank you. Solicitor's report.
I have no report other than thanking the board for its continued support.
Thank you. Thank you. Committee reports. Chris?
Okay, the CRSL meeting happened on, excuse me, April 16th, 15th, sorry. And the, one of the items was the Resolve Room, an update. The middle school Resolve Room has had such great success that district The middle school Resolve Room has had such great success that district officials met with representatives from Lakeside to discuss expanding the Resolve Room to the high school. The Resolve Room at the middle school has been a resounding success in helping provide students with the tools they need to resolve conflict, and therefore, the program is being expanded to the high school. Lakeside is currently seeking applicants to fill the position, and that Colonial will be part of the selection process. That's exciting. And then, the EIB March 18th Committee Meeting, different schools showcased each of their activities that go on in their school, and it was really nice presentations to see what they're all doing. The CSD website app update was released on March 13th, and there are some very handy things that you can do on that newly revised app. And then, regarding the PW Alumni Association, Kim Newell is trying to revive the Alumni Association, which the Alumni Committee includes representatives from all decades and has been focused on connecting people to each other as well as to the school. So she's going to be working with Beth Rickert to get alumni interested in providing career-shadowing opportunities for students. So that's my report.
Thank you. Sharon?
So at our recent Curriculum Committee of the Board meeting, which was held on April 8th, Mr. Basidi discussed a partnership with Temple University's College of Education entitled Transforming School Life, L-I-F-E, for English learners, Ls. This is a U.S. Department of Education grant-funded initiative which aims to support the efforts through comprehensive professional development to improve the academic performance of English learners with feedback from students, teachers, and families. Really thrilled about this opportunity, just want to chime in there with that. And Mr. Merk also revisited the details of the upcoming Summer Academy Program that is being held on July 8th through August 1st. The program will focus on math and ELA, and will have daily activities and guest speakers. Transportation and meals will be provided for all. Then Mrs. Gregitas shared that the summer resources will be available for families that register over the summer, so if we have students that transition into the district, those resources will be available to them. Lenore, and apologize if I say her name incorrectly. Say it again. Chickaloon, thank you. Registrar to the district will provide access to resources to family upon the completion of registration. And our next meeting will be held on May 13th. We'd love to see you there, so please come out, love to talk with you.
I do not have a report for first facilities.
Thank you. Rick, Finance?
The Finance Committee met on Monday, April 1st. The Committee reviewed the final proposed 2425 budget and the 2324 budget year-to-date. As just mentioned in the budget motion, it's current, as it's currently projected, the district will have approximately $2.8 million deficit. It's proposed to cover the deficit by using $400,000 of the aside fund balance and a .658 mil tax increase or 2.63%. Final budget will be voted on the June 10th board meeting and is subject to change before adoption. The 2324 budget is on track, no material changes.
Thank you. Gail?
No report.
Mark, anything for intermediate unit?
No report. Next meeting is April 24th.
Thank you. Chris?
No report from Tech School.
Okay, thank you. Sharon, Legislative?
Yes, so a few updates. The Pennsylvania School Board Association held its Advocacy Day in Harrisburg on April the 8th. And so, just to share a few of the topics that are being discussed and talked about in Harrisburg right now that impact our community. One is around House Bill 1422, which is cyber charter reform in particular. And so, if you'd like to learn more about that, please be sure to look that up, have conversations with us. We want to make sure that our community is informed about this. Another topic that was, that has been discussed and continues to be discussed, especially here in Pennsylvania, are your Grow Your Own programs in terms of creating teacher pipelines, as well as diversification of the workforce. And alongside of that, there's also a bill that's just been passed around student teachers in Pennsylvania receiving stipends to support them as they're moving into the student teaching world. While that's great news, we're also pushing and advocating for our student teachers, for that stipend to be even larger, because it's a first-come, first-served basis, and it's really not going to be enough to serve all of the students in Pennsylvania. So if you know students who are in education programs, please be sure to make sure that they're aware of this. Once it comes out, it's a pretty quick turnaround, so we just want to make sure folks are informed. The MCIU is holding a legislative breakfast for my colleagues here on Friday, April 26th, that's next Friday at 8:00 a.m., so hope you can make that. And don't forget, Election Day is next Tuesday, the 23rd.
All right, thank you. Any municipal report?
White Marsh Township Day is this Saturday, April 20th. Thank you to the facilities team for getting the Victory Fields set up. It's going to be held at Victory Fields right across from CES.
And I'll just add, oh, let me check my, the 27th, April 27th is Conchi Green Fest at Marywood Park. Lots of activities for kids and environmental education. Maybe our van will show up, maybe the IU van will show up there, who knows?
Plymouth Township President Karen Bramlett is inviting everyone that's, you know, a citizen of Plymouth Township to come out on May 29th, where they will be having a discussion on the proposed plastic bag ban. So that'll be May 29th from 7:00 p.m. to 9, or, excuse me, 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the GPCC.
All right, thank you. Gail, the foundation?
Yes, just mark your calendars for October 13, Sunday, October 13, for the CSDF Foundation Day.
All right, thank you. And then, attached for your information are the school activity accounts, the athletic activities accounts, curriculum report, building report, and technology report. And now, is there any public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, is there any additional board comment? All right, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.